He wanted to know when he could call me, so I gave him my number. I'm usually home.
Okay, everybody, we are on. Let's see here. Put my glasses on. And we will begin with opening tonight's Georgetown Planning Board February 10th, 2016 meeting. Third floor conference room, Memorial Town Hall. It's a little after seven. So, begin with approval of minutes.
Oddly empty, too. When was the last time it was this empty?
Actually, before we do approval of minutes, I just want to acknowledge, I think this is your last meeting, is that correct?
In the official capacity, I think.
Official capacity.
Thank you.
So, I just want to personally thank you, Howard, for everything that you've done.
You're welcome.
You've done a great job. I'm gonna miss you terribly. As I said in that email, I basically hung on how you were doing it, you know? I leaned on you heavily for information, so.
Okay.
Thanks a lot. Town thanks you, too.
You're welcome. Good, thank you. It'll be this meeting, and then we're looking into seeing if I can help the planning board in the planning office not have things roll backwards, but at least if they're gonna slow down.
Status.
Yeah, to help Andrea as much as I can.
And we'll, that's one of the items at the very end that I wanted to talk about, that was that email that I sent to you guys. So, we'll talk about that moving forward, but I did just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Tip my hat, too.
Kudos.
Just because I came in late in the group, how long have you been the planner, Howard? I don't know that.
Four years.
Four years?
Four years, yeah. January 2012, I think.
Goes by fast when you're having fun, I guess.
Yeah, it did go fast.
Have you aged any?
Like the photo you see of the President when they're getting sworn in in the last day.
Yeah, he was jet black back then.
It was. Black thicker. About 20 pounds lighter.
Okay, so, if we could begin with the minutes. Everybody wants to?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 27, 2016.
Second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of January 27, 2016. Any discussion? Anybody have any issues? All right, we're looking pretty good here?
Yeah, we're very good.
I was absolutely.
So.
Yeah, there was only one thing, it was just a vote, and it was a 3-0 vote or something. 3-0 unanimous. Oh, yeah. What is it? Line 38, motion varies 3 to 0 unanimously. I think you want to just point out that blah blahs obviously receded from that because it was his Mullins form, right? That was the idea, I remember seeing.
Okay. So, seeing no more discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes with that following revision? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstain?
One abstain, 3 a, and one absent. Okay, correspondence.
Four items are in the packet. The one of notes, the first one, it's the letter from H.L. Graham Associates regarding Maureen Lane for street acceptance. And this was the second report. It really just reiterates what he found in the file referencing the issues that previous site inspecting engineers have found. And it points out that if it is to be accepted, certain things need to be fixed. And I forward this on to the person that is responsible for Maureen Lane, and I have not heard back, but obviously, it's not ready for acceptance at town meeting.
We knew that from the first one, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I thought we were gonna hold off on another review.
Yeah, he, by the time I contacted him, he had already, he was nearly finished with this one, so.
Well, this is specific.
Yeah, very specific and up to date.
Right by point, so.
The other three correspondence items?
They're just from the cursory notices for budding towns, not necessarily important to the planning board.
Okay, moving on to vouchers.
Invoices? Invoices, Mr. Chairman?
Invoices, vouchers?
Vouchers, okay. Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the vouchers totaling $1,109.03.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the two invoices for the total amount of $1,109.03. Any discussion? Anyone with any discussion? I looked, and I'm all set. Do you all sit here? Okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One absent, everyone else yes.
Before we move on, I just want to mention to everybody, one of the vouchers approved was reimbursement for Andrea to go down, get sworn in. She's now a notary, which will help the planning board during planning board meetings if something needs to be notarized. So, that's reimbursement for Andrea for her expenses incurred.
Gotta go get sworn and everything. Enter stamp. Gotta get sworn. Told.
Yes.
It was a good one, I got a parking spot right in front of the O'Neill Building.
You just saved us $45.
All right.
Can we get the pen back, too? There's other PAs there, not that one.
That's the only one on top of it.
Yep, if we do.
All set.
That's all you need?
Yeah. Okay, moving on to the A and R.
Form A was submitted to the planning office last Thursday for property on National Ave. Property owned by National Northway Nominee Trust, and everybody received a full-size copy of the A and R. And I understand from our application in the plan, the A and R is to create two non-buildable lots referred to as Lot B and Lot C. And there's a note at the bottom of the A and R that states that it's to create non-buildable lots will then go into common ownership with the current owner as well as the owner of the parcel to the north of it, which is?
The western.
What's that?
The east.
Eastern, sorry.
National Avenue.
I'm sorry, I don't have the planner. The National Avenue Realty Trust. In talking to the engineer who provided the Form A and the Form B, the purpose of this is to create two non-buildable lots, which will then go into common ownership, and then they will be submitting an A and R thereafter to bring those two lots in common ownership into the single ownership of the property.
The frontage on National Ave.
Right. That National Avenue Realty Trust property is currently accessed by two easements.
I only had one question, Howard, maybe you can answer it. I don't know if the applicant's here or not. Right now, what's being referred to as Lot 8A.
Yes.
Is owned by National Northway Nominee Trust?
Yes.
If, is that lot the frontage for this back lot?
No.
I asked the same question.
From where does this back lot derive its frontage?
That lot has existed for years, and there are access through the easement, and there is, I'm sorry. There's the right ways, the warehouse access road, but it does not have frontage. But the A and R isn't entertaining either of those property, that property, where Metaltronics is.
Just these two?
No, it's entertaining this, Lot 8A, 8B, and 8C are currently one lot. And so, it's actually creating this as a property line. Lot A will remain under the National Northway Realty Trust, and these two will go into the common ownership.
But aren't they, at this point, under common ownership with Northway? Northway owns Lot 8, doesn't it?
National Northway owns Lot 8, correct.
And the one behind it.
The National Northway, the one behind it?
Yeah. Aren't they both owned by the same?
I believe so, but I.
So, would we be making this lot more non-conforming by depriving it of frontage from National Ave?
I don't think so. Because are you saying, you think Lot 8A does not have adequate frontage now?
Oh, no, 8A does, but I would think that because they're under common ownership, the Lot 7, or what's called a 14-8C derives its frontage from 8, what's being referred to as 8A. That's my only concern.
Okay.
I don't want to make.
Well, the only thing we can address is the frontage.
Right, but are we depriving the frontage from another lot?
You mean creating, even though it belongs to the same person?
Yeah, we're gonna create and.
With the same trust.
How about, how about this? We have, we, when's the next meeting? We have, what, 21 days?
21 days since last Thursday.
So.
We're able to invite the engineer to come in. He asked if he could be here. I thought this was straightforward, but if, I always tell them, you're gonna make it for two meetings of the board, if they have questions, they can come a second time.
So, where I'm going with that is, is, you know, what we could do is, is we could notify, because I just have two issues. One was, we typically, yeah, we typically have a note that is in addition to what they have, which is that.
The disclaimer.
Yeah, above endorsement is not blah blah blah.
Not conform, may not conform with the.
So, that was, you know, I'd like to see that get added to that, and then the title of the plan.
Yeah.
I'd like corrected to read, you know.
Yeah, plan of land.
Plan of land.
Not subdivision.
Right. So, if we're gonna do those two, and we have a question about that, you know, we can tell the applicant to make these revisions, and it gives us time to find out the answer to that question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that works.
Does that make sense? Because we're not gonna, we're not gonna know the answer to that.
I, I'm not sure we'll ever get an answer. I mean, if, if an applicant wishes to make their lot of land less conforming or non-conforming zoning, that's their right to do, I would think.
I don't think we're even addressing that. We're only addressing this, this, and this, right? Read his note at the bottom. He doesn't mention this as another, he doesn't mention his 14-8C in the note, right?
These notes?
No, it is not mentioned at all.
These notes for this.
Yeah, I mean, this here, what is it? It doesn't give the dimensions at all, it doesn't, you know, except for the.
So, I, so, we're not, it could be easy, if we could ask, you know, I don't know the answer. We could ask town council if this is okay to allow to do. Town council says it is or isn't?
I'd be amenable to that.
So, get an answer from town council.
Where they are helping common ownership, absolutely change the, remove subdivision from, from the title.
And if he can get those back to us, you know, seven days, get them in our packet, although, however that's gonna work for our next meeting?
Yeah, it'll be needed at the.
We're still under the 21-day limit, right?
With the next meeting, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, so. That's the, all business.
Aye. Provided in the packet was information regarding a tripartite agreement and a lot release request for the balance of the lots remaining at Turning Leaf.
Do we have an updated agreement?
Yes. Man and Man is here to present the updated agreement.
Do we have copies of that, or just the email?
Just the email, I received it.
I have Melissa Ogden from Man and Man on behalf of Turning Leaf Georgetown, and I do have signature copies, but not, I was under the assumption that copies have identified, so.
Did they get, you got my email, did they correct?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, you had the same issue.
Because you find the same mistakes that I find.
And again, we're here to request the signing of the tripartite agreement and the release of the remaining lots in the Turning Leaf subdivision based on our bond as described in the tripartite agreement.
I welcome the chance for the tripartite.
This is the, I'm not gonna give you my signature in case I.
Absolutely, thank you.
This is the one that I thought town council should have a look at. I had some questions about it, answer, Kevin. My concern was that I couldn't see anything in here that says, if, if in fact, the worst scenario would be that they defaulted on the mortgage, and we're, we're kind of piggybacking on to the existing mortgage, will the town get the first dibs of the money that is paid? That's one of my questions, which I thought, you know, that was one of the reasons I wanted town council to look at it. And the second one was the requirement for the affordable housing. We weren't supposed to release all of the lots until, I think it was after the 7th, before the 8th was gonna be the first one ousted, and then at the 11th lot was going to be the second one. And if we release all of these now, that wouldn't be what we had agreed to in the decision, no?
Well, in the decision, in section four, subsection seven, subparagraph A on page eight, we're offered, we're allowed this release, provided that we give an infrastructure completion bond, which we provided, and that would be the.
That's only prior to Lot 8 being released, you have to give the entire tripartite.
Yep, this is for.
Prior to Lot 8 being released.
And that's what we're, we're doing. So, but it's for the release, if you look, I have a copy of the decision, so.
I'm reading it right now.
You're asking.
It doesn't say anything about releasing any of the other lots.
You're asking for 15 lots now, correct, to be released?
That's the remainder. If we were.
Yes, it's the remainder.
We were to release those lots now, we'd be frustrating, page four, conclusionary housing component, where the first affordable housing unit has to be constructed before the 11th lot, and the second has to be before the 15th.
Okay, I mean that.
And the fractional payment has to be made before the 11th lot is released, is sold. We'd be frustrating that.
Well, you still have a right to deny, there's the right to deny the occupancy.
No, that, that isn't in there. Not at all. I'm afraid not.
I know that it's in process, so.
Right now, if I'm not mistaken, have we, I printed it out from the, from the website, from the.
Registered D.
Registered, thank you, Howard. Not thinking straight tonight. At this point, we've released eight lots, or seven.
Seven, I thought, yeah.
The intent of the decision was that prior to the 8th lot being really, you would give us performance bond, tripartite.
Right.
We would, you know, activate that and agree to it. At that point, we would most likely release up to 10.
Okay.
So, that when you need your 11th lot to be sold, then we could ensure that you made your partial payment, your proportional payment, and that that first affordable housing unit was actually online.
This is securing our payment, and it's a, it's a half a million dollar plus bond, which is two-time, I mean, we're going to complete it. We have no intent not to, and I believe that we're authorized to have all the lots released based on the tripartite agreement.
I would disagree.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna get any agreement with this board.
I would disagree according to the decision. I think you need to read it a little more closely.
And we have.
Perhaps read it again. While you're absolutely correct, that does, that surety does give us comfort that the ways and the means and the municipal services will all be done, however, it does not and cannot ensure the affordable housing component. Let me just say that we've been burned before.
Amen to that.
And I'm not saying we won't be burned again, but hopefully not while I'm sitting on this board.
So, can we look at, do the tripartite agreement without releasing, and not release the 15 lots? Is that something that we can do?
I'd be happy to go with the tripartite agreement, assuming that Tilly's happy with the subordination of the mortgage.
I, I would like town council to look at that.
And ensure that.
I'm kind of rusty on legalities like this, so I want to make sure that the town is protected.
I believe it's called subordination of the mortgage.
Okay.
We have first dibs.
I want to be sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I thought I saw wording to that effect, but let's let town council deal with that.
Fair enough.
You feel comfortable with it?
My understanding, and perhaps Attorney Ogden will tell me that I'm incorrect, is that it's not so much that we need to, that basically $540,000 is being set aside of a, of a note that has already been approved. So, I don't know that that has anything to do with them making their payments on the mortgage or any, on any mortgage or anything like that. This is just money that's already been approved and is basically there to give to us, so I'm not sure that a subordination is necessary in that instance.
Interestingly enough, tripartites that we've had in the past, what would happen is, and I know what Tilly's looking at, because she went through it, too. We went through this with, with a subdivision that went bankrupt, when, if the developer would have stopped paying the loan, what would happen is, the bank would foreclose on the property, and we would lose at that point. We would be secondary to that bank. The bank wins first, they're first, they're in first place. We need wording that says that the town of Georgetown is in the first pole position. And that's subordination of the mortgage language that I think town council could easily add.
Yeah.
And just so you don't wig out, I mean, I'd be very happy to approve that, once it has that language in it. I'd book for it anyway, and at that point, I'd feel comfortable releasing up to 11 lots.
10, right?
Up to 10 lots.
You've released seven so far.
Have, have we gotten the lead for the first affordable? Do we get?
Not yet.
It's in process.
Affordable Housing Trust, it is in the process. The Affordable Housing Trust is just finalizing the repairs to the existing unit, and then they're gonna be ready to go to DACD and get the regulatory agreement approved.
I wish it was done, because we were rushing to do that. Really, I think that should be, should have been completed by now.
Well, actually, they hadn't told the 11th lot.
To do the first affordable?
Absolutely.
I thought it was between the 7th and the 8th.
7th and 8th is the surety agreement.
Yeah, and this, I mean, this bond and the agreement ensures our compliance with the entire, with all the conditions and the approval.
No, it doesn't. No, it just, it just secures the ways, the bond for the creation of the way.
All right, well, if we don't complete it and you don't provide, you know.
Unfortunately, we can't pull any of that and use any of that money for anything other than the completion of the way. We could not use any of that money for the creation of an affordable housing unit.
Not to mention, it would be just terribly insufficient.
Right.
Absolutely.
To cover both the ways and means and the affordable housing component.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By half a million plus, easily.
And I hope you never have to go through it.
Yeah.
First AHU shall be constructed on before the time of sale of the 11th lot.
So, what I received in PDF today was the one that was notarized, signed at the bank, everyone signed it, and first thing tomorrow, I'll send it off to town council to have these answered.
Okay. All right. Okay.
And how soon? Them to come back? Next meeting?
I hope so.
Okay, sure.
Wouldn't take any longer than that.
The 24?
Assuming that meeting's not a disaster.
Yeah. We're putting a law on that.
And assuming they're only looking for a release up to the 10th lot.
But if the housing, if the affordable housing agreement's on its way to be signed, would you consider releasing all of the lots in the subdivision? I mean, okay.
Because we'd have to have.
So, you're only, so what you're saying is, after town council looks at it, you're only willing to release up to 10 lots?
Correct.
Okay. All right, my client notes.
As it says in the decision.
Thank you. Thank you, welcome.
All right.
May, could we, there's some people, are you here for Bailey Lane? You want to take that public hearing first? Or actually, you had scheduled the 40-hour before Bailey Lane.
I think we have time.
All right.
So, do you want to do the Bailey Lane first?
Yes, so they don't have to wait through the 40-hour discussion.
Okay, so we'll go to the concept plan, Bailey Lane, public hearing number two, we're gonna go to that first.
Party out there.
Make a motion to reopen the public hearing on the preliminary OSRD concept plan of Bailey Lane, continued from January 13, 2016.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made, and it has been seconded to reopen the OSRD concept plan of Bailey Lane, which was continued from the January 13th planning board meeting.
I sent out by email on Monday in PDF format, a copy of the certificate of approval for a preliminary plan. Did everybody have a chance to review that?
I didn't get it. You sent it separately, other than the pack?
On Monday.
Sorry, did anybody else get it?
To the doc gov one, the town.
I sent it to both personal and the developer one.
I received it. Honestly, I didn't review it.
Just pretty much standard fare. Did you review it?
Yeah, just said that we. I have a copy here, if you want to review.
Preliminary, anyway.
What the planning board is considering right now is just a preliminary plan for Bailey Lane, and what happens with approval of preliminary plan is the planning board and the developer are in agreement in general concept of what the developer's gonna come back with for an OSRD definitive plan. And once that definitive plan is filed with the planning board, then the full technical review gets in. And once that definitive plan is filed with the planning board, then the full technical review gets in, continued input from the historical commission and public and everybody else. So in granting a preliminary plan approval, all it really does is that it locks in what the zoning is at the time. It doesn't guarantee that there'll be a bulldozer out the next day putting shovels in the ground and starting to develop, so. Well, you could be here, it's a public hearing still going on, so.
We're not gonna learn anything.
Besides the plan that was at the last meeting.
Right.
But when they file the definitive, you'll be noticed again.
Okay.
And then when the technical review, all the other departments have another look at it because the information will be much more technical in nature.
Okay.
Are we going to vote, Mr. Chairman?
I'm okay with that.
For the record.
We weren't able to attend the last meeting. Is the plan, was there a plan submitted?
There's a plan presented. And I will have a copy of that tomorrow for you to take a look at if you wish for the preliminary.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
It's just a single sheet.
Right, would I access the website or?
No, you can come in.
Oh, okay.
And, or you can send an email, and we'll see if I get it in PDF format and I can email it out to you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote to, motion to? If I can get a motion to vote to approve? Can I just see the title so I can?
Yeah, but it's gonna need to be changed because it doesn't state that we voted tonight.
I didn't expect you to vote tonight. I expect you to vote on the, what's the date up at the top?
Well, the date's February tenth, but it says that Certified Planning Board Town of Georgetown asked that a duly called and properly posted meeting said planning board held on May, and it states all the dates, and the last date being January thirteenth. The planning board voted something in favor, something opposed to approve.
All right. So I can, if you vote on that, I can have the revised copy at the next meeting. All I have to do is sign it.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan of OSRD concept plan of Bailey Lane, Form D dated, well, it'd be dated today.
Second.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded. May I see that, please? To approve the Form D certificate approval, disapproval of preliminary plan. Dated February tenth, two thousand and sixteen.
With the modifications of what needs to be modified from, on that Form D.
Just that we took the vote today, right?
Yeah.
That's just the date of today.
Yes. So after the dates, the planning, the public hearing was met, you want to add February tenth into that? Is that what it was, Harry?
I think that to make it accurate, you'd have to state that the vote was taken tonight.
Voted on right there.
To make it accurate, yeah.
Okay. February tenth, two thousand and sixteen.
So with that being noted, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
So we have three yea, one opposed, and one absent.
And it's an OSRD special permit, right?
And you are objecting because?
Because if they go OSRD with five lots, they do not have to have an affordable housing component.
He's been consistent on that.
Well, I would, I had requested to have that reviewed by town council because I don't read the law like that.
With all due respect, I do, and that's the reason for my vote, Tilly.
That's why I'm requesting it from town council, board so choose, because I don't read it like that.
But isn't that a matter to come up during the definitive?
Well, that's what I, that's what I was gonna say. I mean, it comes up later.
Or do you think it's best addressed, Harry, with the preliminary, because it's.
I just know that.
According to lots.
I just know that if I vote no on this, I'm voting my conscience, and if it defeats the OSRD preliminary and preliminary goes down, then they're left with the definitive. And under the definitive, they have to follow the inclusionary housing bylaw.
So I don't, I agree with your assessment of the bylaw. I think you're reading it absolutely right. That being said, I don't think that we can punish a developer for having a bylaw that is ill-thought-out. They're coming in with their existing bylaw and they're saying, this is what we want to do, albeit probably a loophole, but nevertheless, the existing bylaw as it's written, to the extent that it's a bad bylaw, we should change the bylaw. But we can't say, we can't penalize them for reading the bylaw better than what the town did when they implemented it. That's my position. No.
I agree with the part where if it's not a clear bylaw, it should be rewritten. But I think town council will point that out to us and advise us how we can straighten it out. Because as I read it, because of that parenthesis in that one sentence that says the basic and the affordable density, you know, the density rather, I think it is, and that it, it's still, this is not the same. The basic is five, and it's no density request that he has made to make the five. He came in with the five, and I think that's the hitch. If it has said in that paragraph, in that parenthesis, basics or, then I could agree with you, but it says and.
I have no problem sending it to town council. I disagree with your interpretation. I've read through that twenty-six times. I've argued with, I don't know if you know Frank, I've argued with him twenty-six times about it.
Well, we'll find out what town council says about that.
You voted three, one to one. And because the public hearing is still open, do you want to withdraw that vote? And get town council to weigh in before you?
Town council's, for me, town council's answer doesn't matter for this vote. I would be helpful to know for the, when they submit the final plan.
Agreed.
But I'm voting this way because regardless, the bylaw is the bylaw.
And they have followed what the bylaw says and, yeah, so.
So the question's being made that this be looked at ahead of them filing the definitive.
Town council to respond, to give us clarity around that issue.
That would be great.
May I ask what the extension for the dated decision was?
Sorry?
The dated decision.
I believe it was the end of March.
Did we get the end of March? I believe they just want to move to the next. Oh, maybe it's just been today.
I don't know where the copy is of that. That was voted on at the last meeting, correct?
Yeah, I believe they, oh, no.
Yes, it was.
What the minutes show.
What, was it the last meeting?
Yeah, it was the last. If it was the last meeting, it'll be in the minutes, right?
Yes. That was continued from the thirteenth.
Ah, the thirteenth? Do you know that?
Yeah, that's why. I have that here.
Minutes of the third, yes.
You'll find it faster.
February twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen.
Can you just read that out loud, Harry?
Yes, under public hearing, OSRD Bailey Lane, continued from December ninth. H Schneider, the applicant will provide a Form H, the request that the board grant them additional time. Motion by Harry Locatilia to extend the time to continue to February twenty-fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Seconded by Bob Watts, motion carries five zero. February twenty-fourth is our drop-dead date, so to speak. Thank you.
This is, Howard, this is one of those, this is one of those items that I don't know how we want to keep track of this, this, you know, the deadline, the date.
It's right in here.
But with the transition and whatnot.
Yeah. Adrian and I have to keep track in the green book, and then we have a wall calendar that we're tracking all the dates that need to be met or considered.
The dates should always be at the end of the quarter, so that there's never any question. And if an applicant chooses to not continue to the end of the quarter, then the board has to have the courage to close the hearing immediately and deny for lack of information. And let them clearly know that.
Does the board want to carry this to the twenty-fourth then?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Because the vote's three to one with one abstain.
And it is a special, Bob's missed two anyway. This is a second. Doesn't change.
What do we need to do tonight so that this is, other than close, what's our other option?
Well, you can close the hearing and, but.
You can't close the hearing, you have to continue it, right, till the twenty-fourth?
If you want to hear from the, from the town council on it.
Yeah.
Why would we not continue it to the twenty-fourth?
I have no objection to continuing it to the twenty-fourth. I can tell you, though, that I firmly believe my interpretation is correct.
Well, we'll find out, no doubt.
It very well could be, very well could be. But I'm just.
Do you want to withdraw the vote then? Because I'll have the revisions and that interpretation at the next for you on the twenty-fourth, so.
Yeah, withdraw the vote, because we already have the continuation, right?
But we already took the vote.
What?
We already took the vote.
Well, we can, I know there is a.
You can withdraw, reconsider the vote.
There is, there is a motion that you can do or that you can reconsider the vote.
Do we reconsider the vote and withdraw it because we're still in the public hearing at the same meeting, so.
Yeah, well, you gotta do it because.
You have to do it.
It does, it has to come from the person who did that.
Any one of the three voting affirmative, I believe.
Remember, because we don't have a rules of procedure, we can do anybody.
I guess what I'm, so if we just leave the vote as we've taken it, what happens? That's just.
Already done it.
And then we close the meeting. What's wrong with that?
Special permit doesn't pass.
Oh.
Because it's, you need a three-quarter majority or supermajority, and you don't have that.
I see.
And this is Bob's second meeting, listen.
Yeah.
So.
I just, I'm just proposing this to keep it as clean as possible so we can get this resolved before.
Doesn't change.
Right.
The result won't change next week.
That's my point. You're not gonna change your vote. So, I mean, I'll withdraw if that's what the board wants. I just not sure.
What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from Howard's point is that it'll make it cleaner on his end, easier on his end for the administration part of it.
Actually, closing tonight would make it easier because you could file everything, the clerk can be done with it.
Well, if he did, took that.
Yeah, and that's maybe the route that this board would want to take considering Howard's leaving and won't be here for the next.
That's, that's.
It's a conundrum.
It is a conundrum, and I, you know, I do want to respect the applicant's, you know, he didn't choose to have Howard be leaving tomorrow. I mean, now, and not being here for the next meeting. Well. I guess.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to close the hearing.
The preliminary, you're closing the preliminary OSRD concept plan.
Public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to close the public hearing for the OSRD preliminary plan for OSRD concept Bailey Lane. Excuse me, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So we have four. That meeting is now closed.
The public hearing for the overlay district.
Without Howard, this is dead.
Well, time, time, time out, time out. Not necessarily.
I have contact, well, you go.
You gotta make it.
I'll try to. You need me for the vote.
You need to open the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to open that.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Motion to open the zoning bylaw amendment, chapter forty-eight overlay district, continued from January twenty-seventh.
Second. A motion has been made and it's been seconded to open the, continue from January twenty-seventh zoning bylaw amendment to chapter forty-eight overlay district. This is public hearing number one on the agenda.
So I, where it was open last week, I wasn't here. I don't believe I can.
Yeah, it's just the first one.
Okay.
Don't miss another one.
Okay.
Please.
All in flow?
I haven't yet.
I'm gonna hand out some information for the board to look at. And I'll give that to Bob when he returns. What is, what I've provided, what I've provided for you is a brief description of what an overlay district is. I found a good way to describe it. And so have a review of that. And then I am providing information from the state regarding some of the process and ideas behind an overlay district, in particular to a forty R. And then later on, I have provided some information from the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I contacted them, and they have stated that there is access to up to twenty-five thousand dollars in terms of a grant that the town can apply for, for outside technical assistance in developing and formulating a forty R in Georgetown. And it's called the Planning Assistance Toward Housing, but it's just not housing with the forty R. It's economic development as well. So it will, funding will be available on July first. We just need to put our heads together and work on the application. You submit it, and it takes up to no more than twenty-eight days for your application to be reviewed and then determination of what the grant monies that will be given to you. I had mentioned this at the last meeting, I'd looked into it, and here's the information. I'm encouraging this to happen because it will allow the planning board and the town as a whole access to technical knowledge, and that person will be able to come in and describe and visually give examples of what an overlay district looks like. Because I've had people coming into the planning office not wanting downtown Georgetown to turn into another, as they said, PBD or a Danvers or Middleton. And with a person coming in, giving the visuals of what this could represent, they can see what an overlay district would look like and how it's not gonna change, or look like sprawl, which I think everyone's afraid of.
Is this part of their job description, this is what they do?
Yes.
They educate the public to what this is.
And they've done it in many other municipalities, and there's a list, and there'll be a chance for the planning board to interview two or three different consultants so you can see which ones you think is the best to assist in the endeavor, so.
So this is just about authorizing Howard, and then, again, I'm meeting with Howard and Mike Farrell tomorrow at four o'clock to be talking about how this transition is gonna take place with the town planner. But with that over here, you know, authorizing Howard, the town planner, to start putting this application together and going after this grant money to get this service for the town to help explain it.
Question.
Question.
Right now, we're in a hearing for a zoning amendment. Does the receipt or the submission of the grant require a zoning amendment be passed?
To be what?
To be passed.
Yes.
After you. E, after you complete your forty R application.
The application.
Right. Part of that conditional approval of your forty R is that the zoning is approved at town meeting.
Yeah.
So obviously, this will not be done for this town meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'm also encouraged by the fact that you'll have a large amount of time to make sure that there's enough public outreach and discussion. That everybody gets involved and so when it does go to town meeting, there'll be confidence in the way people are voting.
Well, th- this is what I'm asking basically. Can we apply for the grant before we.
Yes.
Bring it to town meeting?
Yes.
So that.
The grant, the grant is approved to the town to do the forty R zoning, to do the forty R studying.
I understand.
So it can be best prepared to go to town meeting for vote.
I understand. Question. Just the way my praying works, I'm very sorry. You should know that by now.
I just like your tone, the way you did it.
Is, is this really germane to the public hearing that we're in right now? Because I see this as over here and I'm ready to close that, I'm ready to make a motion to close the public hearing. Cause I see this as business of the board. And I see the public hearing as a public hearing that is held to hold us up, to enact the zoning amendment.
Yep.
Right.
And at this point, it doesn't look as though we're gonna be enacting a zoning amendment or moving in that direction any further. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, um, close the public hearing for the chapter forty R overlay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and it's been seconded to close the public hearing for the forty R overlay district. Um, any discussion?
The only, the only discussion I have is we do have a member of the public here. I don't know if we, we wanna hear from the member of the public prior to closing the meeting.
I'm sorry, Gary.
Well, I, I was gonna question how you now proceed on this process as a board.
Well, I'm assuming that we take this vote and then this is done for now and then we take up new business, which is to pursue this grant to get full education and package put together for the following town meeting.
Well.
And then if I may.
Please.
Our, our question to the grant now is this, this grant doesn't need matching funds or something? This is a fully funded grant for this procedure?
Yes.
Okay.
It won't, it will not, as I understand it, it will not require matching funds to come from the municipality. It is to assist the municipality to be able to go out and get the zoning in place and in instance of Georgetown, a conditional approval zoning in place and to be able to start accessing additional grants thereafter.
Can I continue?
Yeah, please.
Again, but they still may say, well, we don't, we see it working, or they may say, we don't see it working also.
The state?
Yes.
The state, uh, will most likely give input, to best advise, uh, the, how this could be modified for approval.
And I, I think, all set? Yeah, thanks, Gary. I, I was just gonna add that, you know, I think with Howard leaving, I mean, to, to Harry's point earlier though, I think, um, we need somebody who is gonna carry the ball on this in a certain way in terms of educating the town and, um, being really up to speed with all of this and, uh, if, if with Howard going, I, I see that being the way we're gonna do it.
Well, my question.
He put it much more eloquently. I just said it's dead.
I think it's, it's true, but I think that when we hire a new planner.
Well, they certainly will become part of it, but they're not gonna be here in time.
But, but the way I read the grant, when, the grant that I looked at the computer, I think it's May before you can apply for that grant.
That.
Is that correct? When is the, when is the?
Uh, there, well, as I understand it, it's rewarded in July, so May is probably the date it needs to be submitted.
Yeah.
Which, which gives.
So February, March, April. Hopefully, we get a town planner in time to do that.
Plenty of time to start with the application.
I, I don't see why, I don't think that, I think he's gonna have enough to clean up the desk, the office, rather than start a new project for an application. I would prefer getting, uh, an application for the grant and from day one with, with the new planner that we select.
That might very well end up being how it works, though.
You know, because, yeah, that should be one of the things that we look for.
But if this application is not in in time, then you're gonna miss the grant round for this year.
Yeah, well, I think it's taking its time as it is, but there's still a lot of, um.
Well, if.
A lot of, a lot of, uh, that Nick already did with the first application. And there's a lot of communicating, uh, neighborhood gatherings, informing them.
Which is all part of the process.
Yeah.
But it doesn't need to happen before you get your grant money.
No, but that's the, the person that, that is going to be coming here to support the technical assistance will be the one to do all that. And I think Howard is leaving for another job. How is he gonna do?
Well, this is, this is part, this is part of what, when we meet tomorrow, um, Howard, myself and Mike. I mean, this is just one of many items that need to be, uh, coordinated and figured out how we're gonna, um, transition till we get to the new town planner. I, 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 I think this is, I won't speak for Howard. Howard, do you think this is something that, um?
I can remain involved in.
You'd be able to, involved with?
Tomorrow's my, officially my last full day, but there's an ability for me to stay involved and to help with Andrea and the planning board as, as well as this application.
Right. Howard has, has offered to, to try to see if there's a way to stay involved, you know, which we'll meet with Mike tomorrow to find out if we can do that legally, if there's liability issues, all that sort of stuff.
Well, when you meet, as far as I'm concerned, I, I would prefer waiting for a new planner and let him get in the ground floor and know about the application, know about what we're doing and hopefully we'll get someone that's experienced.
But that'll put it, so that'll put us another, that'll put us though another whole year down the road.
Yeah.
Right?
I think. Close the public meeting and then switch over to that or just because that's still an issue on the table, right?
Uh, yeah, right, right, right. So we're back to, thank you. So, uh, with regards to discussion on this, is there any more discussion on, on that motion?
Closing the public hearing?
Closing the public hearing. No more discussion. So all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, so unanimous, one absent.
Before you move into, to further, can we just take up the matter in the planning office? Yep. The open space and recreation plan.
I'm sorry, Gary, did you wanna, were you hanging for anything in particular?
If you, uh, discuss that on the new business, I would have liked your comment on it.
We're gonna come back to that.
Then I would say.
Okay.
Can be a member of public report item. The open space and recreation plan has gotten, uh, I would copied you on the correspondence that the state provided to the Concom agent. And there was a list of eight items in there from the state. The open space and rec plan to Georgetown was granted a conditional approval. And that will allow the town to participate in, uh, DCS grant rounds through January of two thousand and twenty-three. And a grant award may be offered to the town. However, no final grant payments will be made until the plan is complete and there are stating eight items, uh, that are required in order to receive final approval. And I bring up item number six, which is letter of review from the planning board. So what I have done is that I have drafted up a letter for you to take a look at and let me know what you would like for revisions. Letter is dated February tenth and it's two paragraphs. The town of Georgetown Planning Board has reviewed the open space and recreation plan prepared by the town's conservation department and open space and recreation plan committee with assistance of the consulting firm Brown Walker Planners. On behalf of the planning board, I wish to commend the town's boards, committees and citizens for the time and efforts involved in developing the plan. The planning board supports the recommendations contained in the plan and is anxious to work with the conservation commission and open space and rec plan committee and others as appropriate to meet the plan's stated goals and objectives. And this is just a statement or letter of review by the planning board and I believe this will satisfy the state's requirement.
Yeah. I make a motion to accept this letter as written.
I mean, I have nitpicky things I can skip over.
We'll go to motion, we'll go to the discussion.
Okay, yeah.
I'll, I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded to, um, approve the Georgetown Open Space Recreation Plan update, um, uh, letter as drafted by the town planner on behalf of the, uh, planning board's recommendations, uh, supporting the, uh, open space and rec plan. Um, discussion?
No, it's fine.
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Take your mind?
Saying no more discussion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So unanimous, sign something?
It's like a template.
I can tell you this much, as, as a former member of the open space committee, um, that we're, we're crossing number six off, but, uh, number seven, the ADA inventories was, uh, well, I remember the last time we had the plan, we got, we were at this point and we got conditional approval and, uh, it took three years to get the ADA forms filled out. So, um.
Whose responsibility is the ADA forms?
Um, that's the conservation commission.
I thought it was the town administrator that's trying.
Uh, the conservation commission has to work to fill those out with the ADA coordinator.
Yeah, and the ADA coordinator is.
To join there. The ADA coordinator was Chris Rich.
Oh, yeah.
Prior to that, it was Charlie Bratt.
Do we have one, Gary? Oh, jeez.
I, I don't believe so.
So it'll be pretty difficult to get that done.
That's gonna hold it up because it held up the last one for eons.
Well, maybe, maybe there's something that the planning board can do to help them, since we have a technical review agent that we can, that, that would be right up their alley.
Has to be signed by the town's ADA.
A, yeah, you, you gotta have a signature.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's gotta be.
You're gonna be it?
You're gonna take on that title?
You only have to go to each and every conservation parcel and fill out an inventory form for.
Go on, you like walking around.
So, um. So moving on to.
There's only about nine hundred and seventy-five acres.
Member of the public report?
Right.
Okay. So there is no new business and we're gonna move on to member, uh.
Mr. Chairman, could I bring up a member concern?
Sure.
Uh, it concerns the forty hour village overlay district.
And the grant.
Oh, interesting.
It's a member concern. What are we doing?
Gary.
Could you speak on the last thing?
Sure.
It, it may not hurt to send a letter to the board's selectmen stating that.
We need that.
We need that, yeah.
So that's, that's a good, I.
Should come from the conservation.
Yeah, it should come from conservation.
Conservation committee is responsible for getting that.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can just, maybe you, can you have a conversation with?
I'm gonna hand him the letter and tell him to inform the selectmen of, of.
Of the, at the agent.
Since we're poaching chapter fifty-seven anyway.
So there it is. So we did it. Howard's gonna talk to Steve and pass that information.
What do we have with chapter fifty-seven?
Okay, let's get back to this.
Ideas on how we move forward, if we move forward, when we move forward, with whom we, we move forward.
I stated my concern that I wanted to have the new planner get involved with it. Maybe when we select a new planner, we will look for that kind of a scale that he could write grants or has experience doing it. And that would be a priority.
Can you take that off of Howard's plate for now?
What would that, what would that do to the schedule if, let's say, let's say, so it's, uh, February tenth and February, March, April, May. Let's say we get a town planner in, seated in by, uh, May.
Aye.
What would that do for, you know, they won't meet a May deadline to get an application in.
Right, so you'll, you won't take this forty R up for another year.
So that wouldn't happen until May of two thousand?
You, you won't take up the matter of the forty R if you wish to access this grant for the technical assistance.
Correct. Correct. Correct.
The grant.
Or you can have the forty, you can have the next town planner just take up.
I understand.
I guess I don't understand why, if Howard can, if we can pull this off, why would we not wanna go after this now? And then get the town planner who would have, hopefully the grant comes through. Hopefully, we get it and they have the ability to work with it.
I, yeah, it would be, but he's leaving, when, when are you leaving? This is his last meeting. How is he going to have?
It's not my last meeting, Julie.
Well, this is, this is.
I thought that's what, isn't that a misunderstood?
No, this is what, this is what I've, this is what I've been saying several times tonight, which is.
Transition, but I never.
Which is, which is tomorrow, um, myself and Howard and Mike Farrell are going to meet to go over how this board is going to transition the town planner and there are going to be, for example, a whole slew of items that need to be, uh, followed up on. This could very well be one of those and there is a possibility that Howard will be able to help us continue with these things, not in his capacity as an employee.
Full-time, as in the position.
Not correct. So it would be as a, um, consultant to help us get through this transition period.
Or remain as an employee, where it's to keep assisting Andrea in the planning board.
Yeah.
And how long do, do you think that you're gonna be able to be free? I mean, when does your new job start?
Starts on Monday.
Well, he's gonna be, he's doing this as a favor to, he's doing this to try to help us.
I understand that, but I, I just.
He's gonna be, he's gonna be working hard, doing two jobs, trying to, you know.
And, and, please don't misunderstand me. I, 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 that's amazing and that's a, a great service that, you know, we, we all appreciate. But instead of taking on something new when he's gonna have so many other things that we're gonna have to have him help us with, does it, isn't it, isn't asking too much, I guess, is, is my, my point.
I would tend to agree.
In, in addition to all the other things that we're gonna be asking him to do, uh, over the next ninety days or however long we're gonna need to transition.
There are certain priorities.
So this, this is all related and, and it's related to this discussion, but, um.
Intermingles with the other one, huh?
It intermingles to the email I sent to you all.
Yeah, it does.
You know, two questions that, um, I wanna find out, uh, tomorrow. I'd like to think that, um, until we have a new town planner in place, we would have legal counsel here with us at our meetings to answer the technical legal questions that are gonna come up, uh, during the course of hearings. Um, so that's one question. And another question is, and, and Howard doesn't think we can do this, but, you know, is there any mechanism in place for towns, when this transition's taking place, that they can take applications and table them? Take applications and, you know, put a moratorium on applications and apparently, you know, Howard says you can't.
No, you can't. All you can do is extend it out to sixty days.
Is, is do that deal.
Yeah.
So, you know, so, but, so it's coordinating all of that stuff and so in there, some of these lists of items, you know, are not gonna fall to him.
Andrea, we're, we're gonna look into Andrea having more hours.
Andrea having more hours, what she, you know, what, what you feel comfortable being able to do, you know, putting together the minutes and the agendas and and how much Howard can and can't do. I mean, it's like a big question mark until tomorrow night, tomorrow's meeting. I just don't know.
And then, so on top of that, to throw this on him, wouldn't.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
In, in, in addition to that.
As long as everyone understands, we lose a year.
But realistically, I mean, realistically, we're, we're not gonna be ready for anything, any town meeting, uh, in the next, in the near future anyway.
No, but what, but, but by losing a year, we're losing two years, I think, is what'll happen because if the applications then don't have to be in till May of two thousand and seventeen, cause it's sixteen now, um, then that, we're not gonna have those services from that grant in time for the two seventeen town meeting.
In, in my effort with the forty R.
We're now going, we're now going two years, two town meetings.
But what I'm offering in terms of my effort with the forty R is just completion of this path application.
Can't beat that.
Because once that, it's, it's eleven questions to be answered. I'm not carrying forward the, a whole forty R application. It's to make sure that the application can get in to access the grants. And so when the new, when the position's filled and the technical assistance arrives, that can proceed without me.
Do you have the eleven questions?
It's in the back of that package. It's a three-page. It's a three-page application.
Well, so this is.
Of the supplement, Tilly, that I handed out.
Okay.
I guess this is where I, I tend to feel would like you to take the question number one, project description and housing production. Question number two, needs, needed rest. These are issues that I think are kind of big concept issues and they're not, unless it's just.
They're all outlined in the housing production plan, which was approved three years ago, four years ago.
Let me ask you this, Howard. You're familiar with these eleven questions?
Mm-hmm.
And are you, I know when I look at filling out applications, sometimes I dread them and other times I say, well, it's just gonna take me this time, but I know exactly where I'm going and I know how it's gonna happen. How do you, how do you feel about these eleven questions? Do you feel it's pretty straightforward?
I feel it's straightforward and what I can do is prepare a draft and have it to the board because in March, you know, or April.
I don't know why we wouldn't. It's just about getting this thing authorized and it's, he's telling us, he's, he can do it and it's gonna be straightforward and.
Well, as long, as long as it doesn't delay us getting personnel add out and seeking, is this gonna hold up that kind of progress?
No.
I, it can't. That's the priority.
'Cause I understand the position's already been advertised.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and I, I'd never read it, but I know it's, Mike was saying that it's, it's kind of open-ended to try to get as many fish as possible right now.
That's good.
But.
I, I don't know. I just, you know why I'm kinda renegeting on this? Because this forty R has been on our charts for umpteen months and nothing has been hit a link on it.
Well, not two, just months, but, I mean, since the last time I've always brought to downtown meeting. I mean, it's, I don't know.
I can't speak to them, but I, all I know is, you know, it's on this year's agenda and, you know, we're having, we're having these public hearings and, you know, it is moving along and.
The forty R has been changed.
I'm sorry, Gary?
When you're, when you're done and you're.
Yeah.
I looked on the computer, the forty R has some different wording in it and different requests. And I printed it out and that all has to be redone. So I don't think we could make this town meeting irregardless. There's no way.
I, I think you're, I think you're probably correct there.
We absolutely cannot. We closed the hearing.
But if, but if, but if you, if, if we don't pursue this person, this grant money, an expert who goes through this all the time to explain to everybody exactly what this is and show them how it can be and what it can be. If we don't do this application now, it's not going, we're not gonna be ready for town meeting for, for two years, in my opinion. We're gonna miss not only this year, but we're gonna miss the following year as well.
You're taking into, you're connecting that to the idea that the new person here would not be able to move it that fast.
I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm assuming that this person, this grant, is hiring a professional who specializes in this and no town planner does the same. That's not their specialty. Now, they're familiar with it, but they're not what I would call PowerPoint-ready with presentations and.
Yeah.
Just examples of municipalities across Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I, may I say something? I can hear what everybody is, where everybody's coming from. And could I throw this out there? I'm sure that we're going, when you have a meeting tomorrow with Howard and the town administrator. I'm sure there are gonna be priorities this board sets up tonight to make sure that Howard has his priorities as he transitions away and we transition into the new planner. Certain things that we need to have done prior to your leaving. And it sounds like a majority of the board wants this. Could I say that this would be on the bottom of the list? Because there are other priorities that I would think, as important as this is, as important as it is to get the grant in and to meet that timeline so that we could meet the grant round.
I just.
There are certain things that I would hope would be prioritized by Howard for the good of this board and, and town, because a lot of really bad stuff can happen when you don't have a planner.
Well, that's where town council, I agree, and that's where town council comes in and I think we are gonna have to prioritize a list. But I, I would, I would, I look at it slightly different. This town has a serious issue with its tax base. It's nothing new there. You know, everything falls on the back of the property owners. And we have an opportunity with this forty R and I know there are numbers of people that don't, aren't in favor of this forty R for the Lake District. But for myself, what I can say is that this is absolutely an avenue if you're, if people are, are truly interested in broadening and diversifying our tax base. This is a way to do it and I see that as going to the very top of my list of what we as a planning board need to be trying to do for this town. Expenses are going up and revenue's not going anywhere and whatever revenue does come is proposition two and a half and people's property taxes. So I, I put this like at the top of the list, Harry.
Were you involved with the forty R before?
I could see it helping, but.
I was not.
Okay.
I don't think it's a magic bullet. It's not gonna cure our tax woes.
It's not, it's not a magic bullet, but it is a major piece to a puzzle and.
The big puzzle that we came to a dead end for, if that's how you like to phrase it, for the forty R, was the sewage problem.
I understand.
And, you know, we all wanted to do things downtown, but when it came right down to it, that was the hitch. That was the problem, that without sewage or a way of, of having someone with eons of money to do a treatment plant to develop downtown, you, we were stuck. We just couldn't go forward. So even if the town had voted for it, and a lot of the question why they didn't was because, I think Mr. Watts had said it one time, was that they didn't want to use any taxpayers' money to sink into a sewage treatment arrangement for the downtown area.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that. I mean.
That was the big thing, so.
And, and the thing, Tilly, is that you're revisiting an issue from two thousand and nine.
So how has it changed? We haven't had sewage.
It's a lot of years, though, gone by.
Right, but, but the whole forty R's idea has changed, so you can actually get conditional approval without the sewer in place.
But who's gonna take advantage of it, is my point, unless the person has really got a lot of money to sink into it.
Okay, so now.
But, but now you're so far down the road, you're into December or January.
Perhaps, but I could see back in, when you plan, you have to plan for the future.
So now we're talking about whether or not you agree with forty R as a concept, so that's a different discussion.
No, I, I agree with forty R. It's just the idea.
Gary's been raising his hand a lot.
If it was a city, it would be beautiful that you had sewage. I think it's great.
But why are you even talking about sewage when really what's being discussed right now is just getting application in for technical assistance? That's what, I'm baffled.
Well, my, well, the thing is, is that I'm trying to prove my point before when I said it's a long stretch and I would rather see a new person in on it and, and start it and finish it, even for a technical assistance. I mean.
And, and, okay, I can respect that, but in my opinion, you're just kicking this down a whole nother year.
Well, a year would be great if we could get it done another year. We've waited, when was the last vote? Two thousand and nine?
Gary?
Did you yield the floor? Let me, let me speak as a member of the economic development and I probably am there because of forty R. But let me say, Howard or the town planner presently, that position wears several hats. One of them is, it's not just your board, it's the affordable housing board and the town planner is also a member of the economic development committee, of which I, I speak. And I would, I can't speak for the board, but I think that that board would want this high on the list going forward. I'm not saying whether I'm in favor of it or not, but I am certainly open-minded to the concept. And I do think that, that putting this through, this application through right now is important. I would agree with Mr. Hoover on that there and, so like I say, it may not be high on this board's list, but on the economic development committee, I, I think going forward that would be high and I think we would want that process started while the next person come along. Hopefully the job description will keep them there, so that, 'cause that, that isn't, it's still an active board. And this is on our, it's on our radar.
The EDC has received.
If I would ask, who puts this forward? I mean, could the economic development commission move it forward or does it have to move forward by the planning board? That was one question I had.
It's a joint application between the EDC and the planning board.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion?
On that side, I guess.
So just, Gary, Gary was just saying that, that he, from the economic development committee's perspective, he believes they would feel that this is.
I could hear it.
Oh, you could hear that in there?
Yeah.
Okay. We could hear you, too.
As disturbing as that is, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we instruct the planner to move forward as best he can with the time remaining with the application for the grant.
Okay. Second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. It's been motioned and seconded to.
Can I, can I revise that?
The applicant.
Can I revise that? With this being the lowest priority of the thing.
No, don't complicate it.
Well, I, that's how I look at it, because I, I believe we have not yet had a discussion about some of the real priorities that Howard needs to move forward with.
So, so.
We have it.
Just for the purposes of discussion. It's a big ask to ask a, a, a new planner to come in with everything else that's going on to also oversee this. And on top of that, I think it doesn't give forty R the best chance possible to, to, to bring in a planner and have him on day one, hand him this and say, all right, well, these, these technical review agents are gonna be here and we need to be able to tell them what, what, what the, what the board is looking for them to do. I think it's a big ask, particularly where we're gonna just be getting our, our legs underneath us with the new, with the new planner. I think tabling it for a year and, and reviewing it in a year and letting the, the new planner, having us have some experience with the new planner, having the planner have some experience with us, I think is really what gives forty R the best shot.
We're in the discussion. Okay, so any, any, any more discussion? So seeing no more discussion, all in favor of authorizing Howard to proceed with the application? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Abstain.
Abstain, oh, you dog. Okay, I, I.
I was convinced.
It's, one yes, two no, one abstain.
Let it lie for you. Not a big deal.
Now, can we go back to what Harry had brought up, which I thought was a good thing?
Reality.
What is on the list for this transition to?
I was kinda hoping that we'd make the list, that we'd make it tonight.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have any. I don't have, I, I, well, let's start and see where it goes. So what, you wanna start? Did you bring some ideas?
No, I didn't, well, I brought ideas and didn't write them down or anything. There are basically. There's one really, really important thing that the town planner does, the, in my opinion, in my experience. The most important thing is that the town planner writes tight, good decisions for the myriad of applications that we get. I'm hoping that there are templates for these decisions. And that those go on the shared drive, if they're not already there.
Well, I don't.
That way, they don't get wiped when IT comes in and blanks out his hard drive and the new town planner doesn't have to come in and start from scratch.
That's all on the server. Even Andrea can attest. We get a template for everything.
Cool.
Right?
I have to tell you, I worked in IT for ten or twelve years. I never stopped anyone as organized as Howard in my entire life. You can find anything. It is, it is, it is beyond perfect.
I've done that since day one, in case I get by a bus.
Kudos.
So that.
You gotta have that attitude. You gotta have that, pal. I love you. Gonna miss you, man.
So what? And what, what else?
Gonna miss you.
What, what other?
And just, I just wanna add to that, there is a draft decision already done for the healthy farms.
Excellent.
And, and I am coordinating between the applicant's attorney and the attorney for the butter to make sure that, because those were the only outstanding items. As, and once that's done, because there's a lot of aspects that just are outside of my purview in terms of what can be written in there and a condition, in terms of the conflict of what could be a condition in that decision and what's at the state level for this medical marijuana dispensary. So. That is going to be available to the board for the meeting on the twenty-fourth, the draft decision. And I have contacted, just as a sign note, 'cause we're talking about that. I've also contacted, and you'll have a letter from the fire department as well as the police department as a follow-up to the last meeting, so.
Throw the conditions in, we'll weed them out. No pun intended.
And that's, that is something that I made sure was done when I first got here, was that the template for any type of the permit was, and I said it from the beginning, it's always better to take out than to try to add in.
Absolutely.
So.
When you built them.
Instead of copying over to the next, the next one, there's differences. So all, all those are there.
Excellent, excellent. Well, what else do we have that's open, Howard, right now? We have Bailey Lane.
The Bailey Lane, Healthy Farms, the chapter fifty-seven. I've, I've revised the chapter fifty-seven erosion and storm water control bylaw.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I'm not talking about stuff for a town meeting.
No, oh, I'm just, okay, I'm talking about stuff open with the board.
Yeah.
Are you talking about permitting?
Yeah, permits.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's where we can get in trouble. Not bringing something to town meeting doesn't hurt the town.
Piggybacking that.
Of screwing up a, a decision, not getting it out in time or getting on a bad decision. That can hurt the town.
Piggybacking on that, every date that's coming up for the next ninety days. I know it's on your calendars and everything, but if we could get a, just an email list, you know, the OSRD for the twenty-fourth, while all that's closed, I guess, but.
Good idea.
All right, just so we have a list that we can flip through them each day.
Deadlines.
But, 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 so here.
No, we're in warm mode, yeah.
What needs, what needs, what needs to get figured out, though, and I, I'm not, and, and this is what's gonna have to happen tomorrow. He's, he, he can send a list to you, you, you. Who's responsible?
All of us, the board.
No, 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 it's not gonna, no, we're not gonna do it that way. We're gonna have to come up with a way where people, it's not gonna just be broad like that. It'll never work. It, it's gonna have to be assigned to people tasks and.
Couldn't agree more with both of you, though.
Yeah, one person can fail.
Because we, we should have it be one person, but also so that each of us at each meeting can say, okay, well, these are the deadlines that, that Howard told us about. Have we addressed this? And, and address each one in each meeting.
Redundancy.
So that we know that everything's been touched until someone's back in that chair.
We all have to up our game. We all have to read everything. We all have to make sure that we're all up on everything and we have to up our game.
I agree with you, there needs to be a coordinator, but these, these should all be dates, frankly, that, that we should all be worried about every, every meeting.
Absolutely. And yeah, sure, gotta be a lead. Gotta be. You have calendar, Healthy Farms decisions in for, for a draft.
Yep.
And Lane is gone. What else do we?
Chaplain Hill?
Chaplain Hill, just came in. Ooh, baby, ooh, baby.
Chap, the, that's one the attorney needs to be at.
Oh, yeah.
And that is scheduled on March ninth and that's within the sixty days of when it was submitted to the planning board. You also have.
That, that, that's definitive, but not the OSRD? The OSRD was, was incomplete?
The applicant provided a preliminary subdivision application.
Preliminary subdivision.
Claiming that it also included an OSRD.
Right.
And I sent an email back to the applicant and I copied the planning board on it stating. Stating, your preliminary subdivision application is complete.
Right.
But your OSRD special permit is not.
There was no fee, right?
No fee, it wasn't filed with the clerk. The information was absent from what was required, it's just. Nothing.
So just one, we're looking at a preliminary, a preliminary subdivision.
And, and I, I wanna, Tilly had sent an email and I wanna, I wanna address it right now.
Yeah, that's what I wanna explain that, yeah.
I don't think I saw it.
It is, is, Tilly sent just an email to me and, and I know we were trying to remove those things from happening, but the. Tilly's question was, how can you consider this preliminary complete without the OSRD? And it is my opinion that the applicant can submit a preliminary subdivision plan. On land that qualifies for an OSRD. Which is a special permit. Because the preliminary plan, all it is is a preliminary plan. Before they file the definitive, they must go through the OSRD application process.
Alright, then, let me follow up. I, I know I cut it short, that sentence. And maybe I have it all wrong, I don't know. But.
But I'm, I'm also not done, Tilly.
Oh, alright.
So. With that, and, and given my understanding of, of. Quality of the application, previous meetings with the applicant and the engineer. And the way that they submitted it to the planning board. Since I first started here, it's always been a theme of mine. That final approval or denial of any land use permit is done by the planning board and not by the town planner. And I think it's even more important that if the planning board approves or denies. This application of a preliminary subdivision plan, it needs to be done in a public meeting. Because it's a lot more defensible. If I were to write off an email saying, your application's not complete, especially cause I'm not gonna be here day to day.
Okay, then, then you're gone beyond what my question was. As I understand the OSRD process. He submits a, a preliminary concept plan first for an OSRD. As well as a preliminary subdivision. That's what he did. It doesn't become an OSRD special permit until such time as we vote. Along with his recommendation of whether he goes with the OSRD or does he go with the subdivision.
But he didn't even, he didn't even submit a special permit.
Alright, it's not a special permit is my, my thought. Until such time as that step is completed by the board. That we hear him make a decision. That we like the OSRD, he agrees, he then submits a special permit for an OSRD.
For definitive OSRD.
This is, this is.
For definitive OSRD.
Yeah. And that's, that's why I was confused when I read that letter.
This is.
It's too early.
These are all preliminaries.
This is.
Preliminary subdivision. And a preliminary OSRD which didn't meet the, meets in, meets in bounds of one.
In my opinion, the preliminary concept OSRD, which is still a special permit application. And it's outlined in the OSRD bylaws weren't met.
Oh, okay.
So, to me, the application is not complete.
So, 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 so where this is, where this is going is that. Howard is setting up, as far as I understand it, the framework so that it's going to come to our meeting. Um, we will have town council here for that meeting. And we will follow the proper protocol for either approval or denial of the application at that time. Everything will be covered at that point at that meeting.
Oh, good, that would be a very good move.
That'll be the twenty fourth.
To clear up.
No, that, that's.
Whenever this.
The preliminary subdivision application was noticed for a public hearing on March ninth.
So that's.
That's it, the OSR, OSRD.
That would be good to have county, town council there. Because.
Town council has been included on this application since then.
They're, they're, they're speeded all of this.
Yeah, that, that would be good.
So that would take care of that, folks, so Chaplain Hill's, as far as I'm concerned, you can sort of not worry about it right now.
What, what else is open?
Now, Healthy Farms is on the twenty fourth. And the draft approval will be provided in the next packet, Larry Graham is gonna be here. Um, and that's almost complete.
Anything else open? Do we have any other open application?
Two Tenney Street, which was a preliminary plan, has filed a definitive.
I have to put my fingers in my hair.
And it's called Palmer Lane, and they've been noticed for the twenty fourth of, uh, February. Larry Graham's gonna receive that packet, but he is not gonna have enough time. To be at the meeting on the twenty fourth and give a comprehensive review of it.
I, I'm, I'm gonna go into this meeting tomorrow and I'm gonna request that town council is at all of our meetings until we have a town planner. I just want you guys to know that.
Should I attend that meeting as well?
I don't, I, I think it's just Mike, myself, and I, I don't know who can and can't, I don't know if that, you know, what do you, do you get into a quorum issue or stuff like that?
Like, for instance, he just told us a while ago that the, the legal ad, uh, the ad has already been posted for.
Mike put that ad out, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as it's not three of us, you don't have a quorum issue.
So what's the next step?
Yeah, I, I would.
The chair and the vice chair, that sounds appropriate.
I, I.
The, the next step fulfilling the position is you need to form your subcommittee.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and, uh, I absolutely am emphatic about the fact that that subcommittee include a member of the Affordable Housing Trust. Because the position of town planner in Georgetown is partially paid by the trust.
See, that's, that's my problem too, that's another problem I got. I think we really only have three days for the planner. And to give it to, uh, the planner, have the responsibility of another tru- you know, the trust. Is limiting on how much production he could do for us.
Before we switch to that topic and I, I have no problems, but we looked at a property over by, uh, over by one twenty eight, uh, that was.
Yeah.
Kind of in Byfield, what's that development and where has that, is there anything going on there?
Nick Cracknell's project.
Oh, that, that's just still out there, he's still.
Okay, nothing's been.
Nothing's come in.
Okay.
Yeah, that was just informal meeting.
Okay.
And that's it, we have no other open applications.
Uh, well, there's open applications, I mean, projects haven't been closed down, Sixth Narina Way, that needs a final site inspection.
Oh, no, no, I mean, I mean.
Deadlines.
Open public hearing.
No.
Other than the, the.
Stuff.
I, I, I would.
Cool, great.
I would.
Handleable.
One of the, we, we probably need to come out of our meeting tomorrow. You know, we're talking and listing them like this, but we probably need to have this in writing, some bullet items of all this stuff. I'm just gonna make some notes to myself.
Anyway, that's my, that's why I thought this was, the transition was gonna be part of a discussion for posting. This, this ad for, for a, a new planner. And one of the things I wanted to, to discuss with the board is, how do you feel about what I'm saying? Three days for a planner, to my mind, is not enough time. I would, I would rather see the assistant or another clerk.
I thought it was four days.
No.
Four days was.
Isn't it?
No, Tilly. Planning office pays the position of town planner to work thirty-two hours a week.
Right, I know that, it's coming out of our budget, your pay, but you're doing time.
Four days.
For the Affordable Trust.
Yeah, I get paid to work as an agent for the Affordable Housing Trust for eight hours.
Eight hours.
Right.
But do they give you the money? No, they, it comes out of our budget.
No.
No, the trust pays that position.
Comes out of the trust fund.
Well, they, alright, so that's how.
And I don't work eight hour days, I work forty hours in four.
Yeah, well. Alright, so you worked the four days, but my, my thoughts have been, even, even when Nick was here. Is that there's, there's so much clerical work to be in a planner. I would rather see another assistant, another clerk, do a lot of this paperwork. That I feel we're, we're supporting a planner from doing this. And true, he has to overlook it, cause that's, that's his office. But at the same time, we are play- paying. A planner to do clerical work, and I think we would get more quality production. If we had an assigned clerk do certain duties in that office.
Where are you gonna get, that's a budget issue, where are you gonna get the funding for that?
That's why I wanted to see what Mike had to say about that.
Well, that's not his, I mean, I, that, that's, that's a, that's a town issue.
Right, but it's.
Goes back to what you guys just voted no on.
Well, we, we just, we just, um. We, what we're doing is getting more bang for the buck in a sense. If we had a planner that just concentrated on planning. We need that, we need amendment corrections, we need other issues.
Agree.
And, and to me.
Agree with that one.
You're, you're working four days, I thought it was three, but I stand corrected, four days. And we're still behind a lot of things that I think should have been done.
Tilly, are you saying that, that, that this should be a separation that between the Affordable Housing Trust's officer and the planner?
Yes, there should, definitely.
Well, that, that's easily done, I mean, but the Affordable Housing Trust.
Guys, I don't wanna get off.
Does not have to be the planner.
I, I wanna get back, I wanna get back to what this agenda item is.
Worked out well that Howard's skill set applied to that in this case. And I mean, I, I certainly don't, I, I certainly hope that. While we're looking for a planner, a good planner, we're not turning away good planners because they don't have affordable housing experience.
I haven't, don't know what the legal ad said, I don't know, maybe.
What I would like to do, what I would like to do, do you, do you have, do you have any, um, do you have any other specific? Uh, items you wanted to put on the table in terms of?
Just from our perspective before Howard leaves, uh, with Andrea. As far as like an SOP for certain things, when people come into the office, someone plops an application down and says, hey, I want you to stamp this.
Okay, got it.
Andrea, how, how thick is the SOP in the planning office?
She showed it.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, it's pretty impressive.
It's good.
It's pretty impressive, so, that's good, so any others?
Not gonna let it get in trouble, right?
Others?
No, we got a checklist, something comes in, these are the dates, this is how you need to file.
Why can't we just, why can't we just do this, why can't you say you need an SOP, they just said, we got a great one, next. Why can't we do that?
It includes the employee handbook, it's got everything in there.
Oh, I understand, but then we get into a whole discussion about this. So, do you have any other?
No.
Did you have anything?
Other than the dates, but, you know.
Tilly, did you have any other ideas?
I think I, I basically, uh, because the le- the ad is already out, my question.
I don't know if the ad's already out, I'm just saying that the notice is, is, is done. Now, if it, where it's being advertised or how it's being advertised, I don't know.
I must know the process.
Yeah.
Mass planners, in addition to whatever.
Oh, yeah. I think that's the first place they go.
Yeah, that would be a great place to put it. Back low out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I think it's a great idea that Tilly attends the meeting, if, if she can.
Yeah.
Have the chair and the vice chair there.
It's four o'clock tomorrow, I would say, ask Mike if, if, ask Mike. Alright, he's the one that organized the meeting, ask Mike.
I don't think she needs to ask the town administrator's position of permission, he's not the town manager.
He coordinated the meeting, it's, it would be common courtesy, he coordinated the meeting, it would be courtesy.
He's supposed to be the.
He's HR coordinator, it's his job.
He's the personnel director, I don't have, I don't have any problem asking. I'm sure Mike wouldn't have a problem.
Alright, I don't, if, I'll tell you right now, if this meeting tomorrow goes off in ten different directions, I'm getting up and I'm walking right out of the meeting. I'm saying that right now, so, with that being said.
Uh, the chapter fifty seven, I have made the revisions as discussed at the last meeting. And those have been passed on to the conservation commission agent, cause they're gonna have a meeting before the planning board meets next, so to be able to weigh in on it.
What else do we have coming before town meeting? Something else?
The groundwater map has been done.
And you have the.
That's all.
Stormwater.
Cornell numbers.
Yeah, the, the, the stormwater public hearing is the twenty fourth. Larry Graham will be here to help weigh in. And I think it's, it's, it's smart that it's going down the path of just few modifications to the bylaw. And then the real implementation of the, of the Cornell numbers is done in.
Three sixty-five.
Right. As well as whatever regulations come up in discussion with CONCON.
Gonna miss you. Nice job.
The things, you know, the things talking about, I, I think a lot's gonna evolve in tomorrow's meeting. You know, when, when we start talking about what you can and can't do. You know, um, we'll just have to play it out by year, just see how that goes.
Do we wanna establish a subcommittee now?
For?
Selection subcommittee? Or wait until Bob comes back?
No, but yeah, I'd like to get people to notice for that, think about it. Okay. So, that's that.
Second.
The move.
Motion was made to adjourn.
I second it.
En favor, aye.